We're waiting. Yeah, we're live, but there's no sound. Alright, we are back. You guys, can I see you? Where are you? I lost you. I think, I see you here somewhere. Hold on. You're a, you're a big gray screen for me. I'm looking for your meeting. There we are. Found you. Hi. We're live, so we're here.
I can't hear you at all, Jason. I don't know if everybody else can.
Oh yeah, they can.
I can't hear him either if he's saying anything.
Oh yeah, you can. Hold on a second. There it is. There's like a million mute buttons that I have working right now, so.
Okay.
We are live. I, I lost you for a second because, for whatever reason, when I move around from one screen to the next, I'm switching back and forth and stuff, y'all go gray. Like the, uh, the window that I'm pulling from to broadcast you is like, computer resources don't want to fill it in maybe or something, so. Anywho, well while we were doing all of that fun stuff, the, number of people watching has grown from six to 24, so that's a good thing. It'll probably grow a little bit more. So, why don't we talk about why? We decided to do a special session today. I know you posted about it on Facebook already, but bring people up to speed. Crystal?
Okay, so yesterday Brenda was on a call where we received some updates about a lot of the questions parents have been asking about the logistics for things like FLVS and Bright Futures and FHSAA and how the standardized tests are going to work. And so, um, we did some posts in our FAQs on our forum about it, but we just wanted to do this live video so that Brenda can explain exactly what was learned on the call. And also I've been receiving questions for clarification. So I have kind of a list of parent questions that we're hoping we can kind of hit to help people understand these updates, so.
Sure, and along that line, you know, I, I think when you said we saw a, a comment or a post at least that someone made where people are sharing the posts from HEF, which is us, and they're, they're getting that information. And someone commented and said, "Well, they're not the direct spokesperson for the scholarship." And we're not. Brenda, where did you go? I'm about to grab you.
Sorry, I was trying to get some light on one side of my face.
You're good. You look fine. You look great.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, so we aren't the direct spokesperson for the scholarship fund, but we are the direct spokespeople for the home education community as the home education lobbyists for Florida. Um, and that we, Brenda specifically has worked on a lot of the language, uh, the bill information. She works with a lot of the different legislators as well as we work with the different scholarship organizations in the background. We'll work with colleges who need information, some of the homeschool, uh, or home education instructional programs that need updating, co-op groups. We're doing a live Q and A tomorrow night with a, with a co-op group uh, on the, the very subject. So while, no, we aren't the necessarily the direct spokesperson for the scholarship, we pretty much do know, uh, as much as anyone can know about the subject at the moment as all of this is being rolled out. And it really is thanks to Brenda and Crystal and the work that they're doing in the background. Um, and that, it's, it's no small feat. I have to tell you, it is a full-time job for both of them. It is constant calls, constant calls. Um, constant waiting online, on, on this, getting that, a new question in, waiting online for that answer to come back, so. I'm not necessarily offended, but no, we aren't the direct spokesperson for the scholarship, but we know pretty much everything there is to know about all these things. However, things do change. I think we gave some information out in July that has changed. And we are excited to have some of that information changed. Uh, and that's pretty much what the call was about yesterday, so I will let that be the segue where Brenda, you go, go ahead and dive into kind of what that call was. And we have an order to the questions. I don't know if you want to just dive right in?
Well, thank you, Jason, for that explanation because it's so true. Things are changing rapidly. At the beginning of the summer, Step Up for Students had no idea what they were going to have to do and what other, uh, parties are going to have to do to make the PEP work. And as we've been talking, uh, they're trying to get information, get approval from DOE to do it the way they think they can do it, and how it can work on their platform. So there's a lot of moving pieces in this whole thing. And Crystal and I have been on a couple of calls with, uh, Step Up where they are downloading information to us for us to pass out to the people that we are the spokespeople for, along with other, um, other groups that have, uh, an interest in the PEP program. They, um, had to work out some of the things with the FHSAA, with the Bright Futures office, and all those things I've been involved with to make sure that they are doing it the way it was done for homeschoolers. So we have pretty much.
Wait, slow down on that. Slow down on that. Um, because I think that's really, really important. I think that's something that you say in a quick breath and we, it's not necessarily taken in that I, a lot of this is put together for the home education community. PEP is not technically a home education path legally, but it is meant to, designed to mirror home education and as close as it possibly can through legislation while protecting home education as a separate path so that a lot of the fears that people have about PEP harming home education paths aren't, aren't even true at this point. So I just wanted to slow down and clarify. Now keep going, sorry.
Okay. Well, let's pick up first on the Florida High School Athletic Association because this is a big deal to some parents. Um, I was in touch with maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, maybe times passing, uh, with the executive director of the FHSAA to make sure they're going to treat PEP students like they have been traditionally treating home education students. And the Department of Education got involved and we were talking. So we got all of that worked out, but then I got a, a text from one of the people that is involved with the, uh, home education athletic teams of which there are at least two I know of that are members of the FHSAA. And they said that PEP students were not allowed to participate. So I had to go back to the, to the FHSAA and the DOE and say, "Look, we're treating these by law as all the rights and privileges of home education students, and you've eliminated them from participating on these teams." And so they agreed that we should allow PEP students to participate in the home education, uh, athletic team. So now we've got all that worked out, but you can see it's maybe like four or five weeks, four or five weeks with everybody getting input before we actually came to a resolution on that. So many parents on the West Coast will be very happy that their kids can continue participation in their home education athletic teams. Uh, and then the other issue we weren't sure about was what's going to happen to students who are, uh, 11th grade and they transfer to a PEP? Are they going to lose their standing as a home education student for Bright Futures? And then they had to go to the Bright Futures office to figure some of that out. So the decision has been made that they will not lose their scholarship. Um, the districts have been notified that they're going to have to continue to record the volunteer hours as the home education students have been doing in the past. And, um, that they can change from being a home education student to a PEP student and not lose the scholarship. So those were questions that were really important to parents with 11th and 12th graders. So we've gotten that worked out.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so one of the things that the districts had confusion on, uh, when I was on a call for, uh, the DOE was doing a call with all of the district home education contacts. And, um, one of the things was they said, "We don't know how to charge PEP students." Well, I have some clarity on that as well. If you want to do Florida Virtual School as a, uh, Flex student, Florida Virtual will be on the platform for you to choose. You will be treated as a Global Student for the Florida Virtual School. The amount of the tuition will already be determined and you can choose that as one of your curriculum options. So that's worked out. They told me that there were a couple of public schools that were already on that platform for the FESUA. So if parents want to use a public school for art or theater or whatever the.
Band?
Band extracurricular class is, then they need to make sure that that public school, um, gets approved as a provider. And then your, the money for those classes will be taken out of the parent's scholarship and sent directly to that school. So that's an, uh, important piece for parents who are using particularly band. That was a good, good selection, Jason. Um, because you do have to take a class to be in band. You don't necessarily have to take a class to be in athletics. It, you might have to, but that's, they often do football practice after school. So, um, just to clarify, dual enrollment has not changed. And those PEP students will be treated just like home education students. And the DOE is getting, uh, a communication out to the dual, to the state colleges that they are to award a PEP, I mean, a dual enrollment scholarship to the PEP students. So they will be treated just like home education students are now. The books will be provided just as home education students have now. Um, and I've, I've had an email from somebody that said their, um, state college said they don't serve PEP students. If you get that information from your state college, you need to tell them to call the choice office at DOE and, uh, or even the, the, um, Division of State Colleges at DOE to back you up in telling them that your student still receives the dual enrollment scholarship. Okay, so test requirements. Crystal has pointed out that at the bottom of the list of tests that we've referred people to from DOE that are, um, approved tests for this scholarship, that it says at the bottom that they have to be taken in a public school. That is going to be changed. It may not be changed yet because DOE is a big organization and they don't do it in the choice office to make the changes. It has to go to their data center to make all the changes that they want. It may not be there, but they are going to change it and there will be information on the Step Up for Students website as well that you do not have to take it in a public school. You can take it with a, an evaluator, choice navigator, certified teacher. Um, you could take it at a private school. And they are talking about and leaning toward allowing a parent to give it in the home if it's proctored. So I'm, I'm not saying that is going to be approved, but they should have a decision in the next.
That's in the discussion. They are actively talking about it. It's not an unknown factor that people want and they're unaware of. They've been made aware of it. Um, they seemed amenable to the idea on the call, but there, there, there's a discussion that has to be had. There are things that have to be talked about, so.
Right.
Is that, yeah, okay. Uh, some questions coming in real quick. I think these go a little bit back to your previous, your, um, previous statements about PEP. One of them says, uh, Kena says, "Does your PEP money pay for your dual enrollment?"
No.
That's not how dual enrollment works.
Because you're on a different scholarship for dual enrollment, so that money will not be taken out of your PEP funds.
Yeah, dual enrollment is separate. It's something else. Uh, PEP students can access dual enrollment, uh, but it's, it's not your PEP money being used for that.
But it's free of charge and so are the books.
And then someone else, similar, similar question, but maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding here. Someone says, uh, ooh, let me, I lost my spot. Um, "Does PEP pay for dual enrollment at private schools like Florida Tech?"
Um, the way I read the, um, legislation, PEP can go toward classes taken at a post-secondary institution. Since the dual enrollment covers it for public, I'm going to say that if it is a private post-secondary institution, your PEP funds will be used to pay for that. That could be that something will change, but I don't see any way in the current legislation that it's going to pay for it at a private institution because the, uh, the, the public institutions submit to the DOE, uh, the number of students, so it comes out of their FTE. The private institutions don't get FTE, so I don't see how that's going to pay for the private ones.
And is that the same for charter schools?
Uh, charter schools will have to get on the platform just like a district public school because charter schools are public schools.
Mm-hmm, okay. I didn't know if they were classified public or private, but makes sense. Um, good, good answers, good questions. Uh, Deline says, "You do a wonderful job," and she also has a question. "I also have a kindergartner and wondered this." It's in response to a question about how testing will work for kindergartners who can't read yet. Um, I mean, obviously those, I, I don't know what the tests are like, but I wouldn't think they're going to sit down with a, a booklet of a test in front of a kindergartner who hasn't been taught to read yet, still learning their alphabet and say, "Make your way through it." These are typically proctored tests, so they're, they're a little bit different.
There are tests on that list, I'm pretty sure. Crystal, you may want to chime in here.
Sure.
That looked like they were, uh, designed to test kindergartners. How that works, I have no idea because I've never seen a kindergarten test.
Yeah, I haven't gone down the list and checked the individual tests, but I know that most of these tests are administered based on the grade level. So they're not going to give the same test to a third grader that they would give to a kindergartner. So I'm assuming that they have, if they're requiring kindergartners to standardized test, that they have a test for the kindergarten level that would probably involve a lot of, um, like oral questions rather than written ones. Um, that should, that's what I would assume at least. I haven't been through to see what they're actually offering.
It might be that they would want to call a private school that administers those tests and see how they're actually given.
And on the topic of testing, I have a bunch of questions from parents. Um, so do you mind if I kind of go through them while we're talking about this?
Yeah, let's grab, there's a few more on that are coming in and, and for what we're doing and then we'll move, we'll move forward. The, "Do you see Bright Futures requirements for PEP students staying the same as homeschool or, uh, changing to meet the public school requirements?" I don't think they talked about that, or did they?
They did not talk about that, but my opinion is that they will remain the same because of the way the legislation was written. Um, I think they're going to have to modify some of the other laws pertaining to Bright Futures and, uh, extracurricular activities in the upcoming session to fix what they didn't address in the last session. We're working all the details out so that they can actually get good language to go into the bill, but I'm pretty sure there will be a glitch bill to fix some of this stuff. So, uh, that also was told, um, by the Bright Futures office that their new handbook should be out mid-August. I have not checked to see if the handbook is out, but you might want to, parents might want to go there and just see what they've put in as the requirements.
Yeah, someone said the other, uh, Monday on our stream that they had checked, that the new handbook had made it out and they had checked, but I think that was, um, prior to the conversation that you had had with them. So I, I think they're going to probably end up, um, editing it and probably either doing an update to it.
It would be the 2324 handbook, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, someone had said that they had already released it, but that the PEP information wasn't in there. So they'll probably end up doing an, an update. Yeah. Uh, "Can you have both PEP and Unique Ability scholarships?" The answer to that is no, not for the same child. Yes, if the children are different. They're not, uh, you cannot double dip. So you, as a parent, your child can have one or the other. And each child can, one child can have one and one child can have the other if you have the need for that. So they do cover different things, so it's, it's important to pay attention to those things. "Is there any opportunity where we might add these statutes that we can use? Unused funds toward Florida 529 prepaid like UA does? Do you know about them?"
I think what they're asking is, um, because in a previous call we covered that that is not an allowed expense for PEP. You cannot roll it over. So I've, I think this is a similar question I've seen in some of the Facebook groups, which is, can, can they petition legislators to add that as something that would be, uh, possible for PEP funds?
Are, are, I'm not sure I understand the question. Are they talking about at the end of the 12th grade? Can they roll over the, the funds they haven't used? Is that what they're, the question?
I think that's what they're asking, so maybe the confusion, maybe the confusion is in the difference between why UA allows for that versus, um, what's happening with PEP. So maybe if you can just explain that really quickly.
Okay, um, the students that are going through a public school are on a grade level. They don't get to choose like home education students, "Ah, my child's not in grade three or grade five." We just sort of homeschool wherever the child's, um, knowledge level is. That is not going to work in a PEP program because you have to have your child tested at the end of each year. And the PEP students don't have unique abilities unless they didn't qualify for an FESUA. And federal law allows a student with disabilities, documented disabilities with an IEP in a public school. And in state statute, we've used that same, um, time period as an FESUA because they have disabilities and they may be behind in graduation requirements to stay in school until they're 22. So the, the P, FESUA students can keep those funds after they technically age out of high school, but the PEP students will not be able to do that.
Right, good clarification there. Um, "Priscilla asks, 'Will there be any official document from the, uh, SFO on behalf of the Florida Department of Education to state that the student is a registered student in the state of Florida for their education? Previously, I was using the letter of intent and letter to an email confirmation from the county school district as a formal document of home education in Florida.'" P, PEP, the personalized education program, is the registration. It takes the place of that.
That's the answer. You ran the answer right in with the question.
Well, I just answered it really quickly.
Well, and to clarify, to clarify this question, because I received a similar question from a parent. Um, it might be the same question. Um, what they were looking for is some sort of documentation to provide places that require that for teacher discounts. So there are places that offer a teacher discount for home educating parents, but they want to see your letter of intent or some proof that you're home educated.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, so for those parents, they're not sure now what to provide as their teacher discount proof. I'm not sure if that's the same question, but I know that's one that I received. I, I advised her maybe to try providing that confirmation email from Step Up that says that they've been awarded PEP, but I know that that's probably going to take some education and explanation on their part too.
Certainly.
When they submit it, explaining to, you know, wherever they're trying to get the discount, explaining what PEP is to them. So, um, I don't know if Brenda has any more to add on that, but I think that might be the angle that the question is coming from.
Got you. Yeah, no, I didn't.
If that's the case, they're probably just going to have to talk through with whoever they're trying to get the discount, showing that it is a state program and they're directing the education of their child.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, "Do you feel confident in us terminating homeschool under the district for an athlete and receiving PEP funds? I saw the update and just wanted to make sure I can still do this for my senior athlete already participating in a fall sport."
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, and then so forth. Fulfill trip authorizations is what they were looking for. Okay, understood. Uh, I think we answered that. Alright, um, now we have maxed out those questions that have come in.
Wait, wait, I have a clarification.
Go ahead.
Somebody just texted me and said there was some confusion about, um, the, about the home, the PEP students participating in co-ops and for athletic purposes. Okay, I think that's not the right wording. As you've said in past, um, uh, lives that we've done.
Yep.
Words are really important. So, uh, uh, the home education athletic teams is not a co-op. It's an athletic team that is a member of the FHSAA. So if that's what somebody is referring to, the answer is yes. PEP students will be eligible to participate with the, um, homeschool athletic team. They will also be eligible to participate in private school, public school, and I believe a charter school. I'd have to look at that to make sure, but it is a public school, so they should be able to. And the other thing, can they, can the PEP funds be used for co-ops? That is yet another kind of in-house word that we use, but it's not a legal term. The, the co-op where I'm teaching your child and, and you, you teach my child is not going to fit the definition of a home education instructional program, which is on the Step Up for Students website. Crystal, is that in the purchasing guide?
It is. There is a section, a category in the purchasing guide that specifies the criteria for what qualifies as a home education instructional program. It is in there under tuition and fees for a home education instructional program. It's a category in the guide.
So if your co-op fits that definition, then they are basically going to approve it, is what they told me. Now, whether they come back and say later, this one doesn't fit that criteria or whether it's going to be based on, you know, somebody's integrity as to whether it fits that criteria or not. I think one of the big pieces of that is, is this a business? And if you're not running it as a business and they're not going to pay individuals, you might be able to get it covered as a reimbursable expense, but I doubt that you will because your, your home education instructional program has to fit the criteria.
And there's, there's a reason for that, right Brenda?
Absolutely.
Yeah, do you want to speak on that?
Sure. As we've been setting these programs up and I've been involved in the accountability for the scholarships beginning in nineteen ninety-nine with the first program, which was the McKay Scholarship. We, we have tried very hard to give as much flexibility and freedom to parents and private schools as possible. But in the beginning, there was, there were several instances that reported in the newspaper where there was fraud and some of the heads of the private schools were spending their money that was coming in for student tuition to buy their cousin a Beamer or some other expensive car. And that is definitely not what the money was supposed to be spent. So then we had to put in criteria for private schools to be eligible, and that is a very key word to participate in these scholarship programs. They have to go through a huge checklist, which is found in statute one oh oh two point four two one, and get approved by the department to be an eligible private school. Therefore, you don't have umbrella schools that are going through that criteria. You don't have co-ops going through that as a private school. So all of these words we use in conversation in the home education community don't fit the statutes. And if, if a program can meet that criteria, and one of the big things is regular and direct contact with the student's teacher, which was put in back in about two thousand two, and it related only to private schools. Now we have these scholarships being offered to students whose parents choose to do a virtual program. Well, they don't necessarily have regular and direct contact. So right now, the DOE is looking at that, so is Step Up for Students looking at that. That may be eliminated in the upcoming session, and that will give a lot more freedom and maybe even some of the umbrella schools could qualify, but right now they can't. So it's, as you said, Jason, it's all about creating the programs to prevent fraud, because no matter how many good people we know, there's going to be all, some people who are going to try to take advantage of this and spoils it for everybody, especially if the newspapers pick it up, they make these programs look horrible.
They love doing that.
They do.
Absolutely love doing that, though, in fact, the article that was referenced on Monday, when one of the commenters had said something about the, the article mentioning the funds being used for, possibly used for the, the for college as they roll forward, and we answered that question already, but the, the article is linked from USF. I think USF's news people in-house, and they were tearing it apart, crying about how, oh, the public education system's already in need of so much funding and they're just stealing money from the public education system to give to people. And it's like, well, clearly they have, they're, they're pretty obvious about what they're all about. But this money doesn't come even from that, so I thought that was really interesting too. But they're, they're not going to stop short of trying to just make us look as bad as we can, yeah, absolutely one hundred percent. We don't want to give them any, any legitimacy, any reason to, on any legitimate level.
And, and another point let me make is parents sometimes get so irritated that they can't buy what it is that they want because the statutes determine what you can and can't buy. Let me remind parents, this is a privilege and this is money that you didn't have when you started either your child in a private school, an FES UA, or now the PEP program. You're being given seventy-five hundred dollars plus to direct the education of your child. So if you can't get an item that you think should be approved and it isn't, use your own money for that. You were going to have to use your own money in the first place. Don't make an issue out of that for the legislators or for Step Up for Students when you just hound them to death. They, they've got a huge job trying to administer this as well as other ones, and it's not as neat and orderly for the FES UA and the PEP as it is for them to send a check to a private school. Because they have to approve and send reimbursements and hire a lot of staff to be able to do that. And parents, be grateful for what you've got. If you don't want to take it, that's fine.
Betsy says amen. Amen Brenda, amen.
Sorry, I'm preaching, but it's really.
Nah, the choir is in a chorus right now. They do amen to that, absolutely one hundred percent, absolutely. A global question, what freedoms would a family give up by accepting PEP? I hear things like, you are no longer a homeschooler. Man, I just want to slap somebody on the wrist with a ruler every time I hear that. It gets under my skin. Oh, all right, I'm gonna keep reading. And quote, "The state now decides what you've been deciding," end quote. I'm sure most of this is rumor, but can you speak to the changes a mom can expect by making this transition? That question we get on almost every single live.
We actually have an FAQ about that in our forum. I literally made an FAQ saying, what is the difference between traditional home education and PEP? What are the differences I can expect? So we have a whole FAQ on that, but you know, we can touch it briefly here too.
You know what, I, and I, I don't want to keep saying that's the answer to a lot of these questions, but we get, we get many, many, many calls, many, many, many questions. This question comes in the law, it's came in on everyone, and I can't tell you how many minutes and hours I've spent answering that question. We put the resources on our forum and on our website, FLHF.org, simply for you to browse at your leisure, to share, man, maybe even rub it in someone's face that they don't actually understand the law. Not that you want to get sassy too much, but you know, like you know what your rights are and move with confidence in the directions that the law allows you to move. The, with the freedoms that it provides you and the opportunities and the flexibilities that it provides you. In short, there are a couple of other requirements for PEP students that are different from home education. But it, we have tried really hard, Brenda especially, mostly Brenda, I just came on this year. So I'm echoing all the work that she did to make the PEP match home education as a path as closely as possible with flexibilities and opportunities, privileges and rights. There are, as with all programs that money is spent in, you want accountability. You would never want to see money being thrown out by our government or anybody else wantonly without any kind of accountability to how it was spent. So there are some things, but we have also lobbied very hard to make sure that those things for this program are as loose and flexible as possible and give the parents as much, say, in every aspect as possible. And continue to ask, you know, continue to be on the live streams with us, let us know what's important to you, because that helps us. That helps us build our list of things when we go talk with them and say, hey, these are the things that are important. Hey, we will have a homeschool family that will testify to this and, and give their testimony of why it's important, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, and on, on that note, if you are a homeschool family who would be willing to appear at the Capitol if we have need for something like that, message us through the contact form on our site, because I'm keeping a list of those, so that if there is ever a need, we have a list to reach out to. And then also on the second point of that question where they said, you know, they're going to make the decisions for you or something like that. That just isn't true, so you still, PEP is a parent-directed education. So they do not have authority to tell you what you can use with your kids, what curriculum you can choose, how you can educate your children. You still have all the same freedoms as a home education family. It is just considered a separate track and statute.
The only limitation and difference is that the PEP parents have to submit a nationally-normed reference test score at the end of each year because they want to measure how well the, the program is doing. They're not interested in your individual student's progress as, you know, the home education criteria is home educational progress commensurate with his or her ability. You have five ways to measure that, but in the PEP, the only measure that makes any sense is a test score because Step Up in the state doesn't have the personnel to try to figure out how a teacher evaluation measures your child's progress, so. So that's the limitation. Everything else, we have worked really hard to make sure you have the same freedoms and opportunities as you would have if you had chosen to be a registered home education student.
Yes, so another question just came in with exclamation points and question marks, Brenda. And it says, what are we going to do without Brenda?
It may take two or three to replace me, but we're working on that.
We are working on it, and in fact, you know what, I have the answer to that, actually. I'm gonna give it right here, because Sue asked it a little bit earlier, which is, do we have the support coming in that we need to replace Brenda with a lobbyist? And the answer to that is not yet. Full transparency, not yet. We're a fifth, a sixth of the way there. There's more support that's needed, so the number one thing you can do is head on over to FLHF.org/support and pick a monthly option and make it count and spread the word. Spread these videos, share this helpful information with people so that we can get predictable support as income and then plan to have a lobbyist that Brenda can mentor and replace, so we will have someone in the Capitol doing this. And continuing where she, all the good work that she has laid the foundation for, we can continue, so. All right, that's it for the questions so far, so I don't have any more here. Roll through yours.
Yeah, I have a bunch. So most of the questions I received had to do with the standardized testing. This is something that from the beginning, parents were wary about, and it was, it was a blockade for them in like choosing to do PEP, and so now that we have confirmation that they will not have to take it in a public school, that was a big relief for a lot of parents, but it also came with a flood of clarification questions for me. So one of the things I think I need to clarify in the FAQs after what, hearing what you said today is that the, the proctored at-home testing is still being determined. They're leaning that way, but it's not official yet, so I need to clarify that. But the, a lot of the questions were related to that in terms of could a parent proctor the test? Does it have to be an official proctor? Like, I know BJU has like online virtual standardized testing that is proctored virtually, and parents were wondering if something like that would count. But I'm, from today, it seems like maybe we just don't know the answers to those questions yet.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll update the FAQ just to let people know that we're still waiting for confirmation on that. And I'll just kind of move past those questions for now, because a lot of those nuances were some of the questions I got. I do have one parent, she's also an evaluator, and she just wanted to kind of make her, make her concern known to Brenda that some of the tests on the list, like the Iowa, for example, already allow a parent to administer it at home without an official proctor and submit that to the county in lieu of an evaluation from a certified teacher. So she is hoping that we can advocate for that to be allowed for PEP if it's allowed for home education already. So just to throw that out there, but again, I know that based on what Brenda said today, we are still waiting for confirmation on how that the proctored part, if you can do it at home and have it proctored, how that's all going to work. The other questions I got were, if I am a certified teacher or evaluator, can I administer my own child standardized test? Or do I have to hire a different evaluator?
My understanding is you're going to have to be on the website as a an approved provider for that. So if you're a certified teacher, you're going to have to go in and put in all your credentials and you will have to upload some documents. I haven't seen it because I don't go deep into those sites where you're applying for something, but I did ask the question. Will they have to provide hard copies of those documents? And the answer was yes, but you will upload it onto their website, not send them paper.
Okay, so then if you are an evaluator and you would like to be basically qualified to offer these exams at the end of the year, then you'll want to go ahead with Step Up, apply to become a choice navigator or an approved tutor, and that way you'll be on that list. Brenda, do you know though, if someone is a choice navigator, can they administer the test to their own children, or does it have to be a third party?
I don't think there's a disqualification for being the parent.
Okay, um, the other questions I had, could we get a group together and have one qualified tutor slash choice navigator proctor an exam for a group of PEP students?
Yes.
Okay.
Many evaluators already offer that.
Yes, I, I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify if there was anything different for PEP. All right.
And don't call it anything like hybrid testing or anything like that, where we have to follow another name.
Do PEP funds cover only one test per year? What if I want to get more than one standardized test done for my kids?
Pay for it out of your pocket.
Okay, so do we know for sure they only cover one test per year?
I don't know.
I'll have to check the guide, but if, if, if they don't cover it, Brenda's right, at least one of them will be paid for and you could pay for the extras out of pocket. Let me scroll back up and make sure, oh, do we still have to use one of the tests from the norm reference list? Or can our evaluator offer, you know, any test?
It has to be from the approved list by DOE. Part of that is because when they compile all of the test score to get a composite, the state university has a platform that they created that certain test scores will then be equated to other test scores and. And, um, if you throw in one they don't have and it's not approved, then they don't know what to do with it.
Okay. That makes sense. Um, and then I had a question, is there any way for the standardized test to be waived due to disabilities?
Not in the PEP. If you're on an FESUA, it's not required.
Right.
So that would only apply if there was a family who for whatever reason did not qualify for, or didn't receive FA- FESUA and were PEP, but they have a disability.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, your child will not be disqualified regardless of what the test score is.
That's another valid point.
You only have to turn in that test score and obviously you want your child to do his or her best on the test. Because overall it's going to affect the, um, final composite score for all the kids taking it.
Which affects the perception of the program and the perception of home education. Yeah.
Exactly. And that's a big point, Crystal. Thank you for making that because since this is going to look almost like home education, that score will be reflected on home education families, even though they're not being measured.
Yeah. So it's a composite score. No one is seeing individual student scores. But if the overall scores for those tests looked like all the PEP students are just bombing the tests, then that is going to cause some assumptions for home education and how well home education is working as a whole. So we definitely want to avoid creating that perception by intentionally doing poorly on the test or anything like that.
Yeah.
But, but the other point that Brenda is speaking to is that no one is checking these scores for any kind of approval for your individual student. So
And it doesn't impact whether or not you get it again.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't impact your homeschooling the next year. They're not going to come back and say, well, you, your child scored low, so now you have to use this set curriculum. Like it doesn't impact your ability to continue to have the freedom to direct your child's education.
But if you're worried about that and your child does have a disability and it is diagnosed, submit for FESUA and go that route. And Brenda's correct there. It's not the same requirements. It's very different. So.
And FESUA also, um, provides funding for additional categories of expenses that PEP doesn't include. So you may benefit from FESUA for that reason.
Love that. Be thankful. Awesome. Well, what do you, what else do you got?
Um, I had a couple of questions about Bright Futures. I think maybe we covered them. Yeah, we covered. Okay. So, um, are students who are registered with an umbrella school for homeschooling for 11th grade, but transferred to PEP for senior year ineligible for Bright Futures? I know the answer to this one because I already confirmed it with Brenda. Um, an umbrella school is not a thing in statute. So according to the law, you are technically a private school student if you are enrolled with an umbrella school who is tracking your attendance and all those things. So if you transferred to PEP senior year, you would be ineligible for Bright Futures because according to, the statutes and how things are categorized, you would be switching from a private school student to PEP. Um, that's not the same as what they've approved for a shift from home education to PEP. So, did I get that correct Brenda?
You did.
Okay. Um, and then I had a question about Bright Futures handbook, but I think we just don't know yet when they're going to be updating that or if they're going to be updating that official and, you know, releasing a new handbook or anything like that.
Sabrina Giovanna says this pro- this PEP would look a whole lot different without everything you all have been doing and advocating on our behalf. Thank you. And please don't get tired of us. We will get this sooner or later. A little hard face. Yeah.
Um, I think that's all the questions I had because my last one was about the co-op thing, which Brenda already covered. Um, just to reiterate, if you want to use PEP for a co-op, it would need to meet the requirements for a home education instructional program that are in the guide. If it doesn't, then that falls under the, you will have to probably pay for that out of pocket. Um, but at least you'll have the PEP funds to cover other expenses that you wouldn't have otherwise had. So.
Or possibly the person that's doing the teaching in the co-op is a certified teacher. And they could qualify for at least, uh, that course where there's a certified teacher teaching it as a tutoring.
Yes. So that's, that's another option. If, so if something the co-op is doing falls under one of the approved categories, like part-time tutoring, then yes, you could still
The individual.
Yes, the individual. Um, what, the question that I received was more about the actual co-op fees. Like I guess there are co-ops that, you know, they all pay a fee to the co-op and then the co-op uses that to fund like shared educational classes and things like that. Um, for that to work, it would have to fall under the home education instructional programs, um, criteria. I've also received a question about virtual home education instructional programs, uh, ones that don't meet in person. And I think that's going to fall under virtual programs, not home education instructional programs. Because one of the criteria for a home education instructional program is that it must meet at a physical location. So the criteria for virtual programs is a different thing. But that's, I think, also explained in the purchasing guide as to which programs are already approved for that. And if you wanted one approved that wasn't, you would probably need to reach out and request for that to be added. Or have the program reach out and apply to be a provider.
And they'd have to do that through DOE. Um, and there is a section in the law, I'm not sure I can actually find it while we're online. But there is a, uh, section that, uh, specifies what they have to be if they are a virtual provider, but the choice office at DOE can give you that information.
Okay. So, um, I'll make a note of that and that way, you know, maybe we can eventually do an FAQ on that as well. If you have a virtual program, you're wanting to get approved, that's not something that Step Up has control over. It has to go through DOE, um, to be approved.
Someone asks, at what point in this process would we need to un-enroll from an, an umbrella school?
Um, I can, I think I can answer that. So on the call with Step Up earlier this week or last week, my days are blending together. We were told that there's sort of an August 31st cutoff date where they are in the process of cross-checking that everybody has submitted their letter of termination or un-enrolled from whatever other uh, type of education track they were doing, um, and submitted your student learning plan. So they are wanting all of that done on the parent end by August 31st. Or you might be denied because that is sort of their cutoff date. Now I know that they're a little behind on things, so I don't know for sure if maybe they are going to take a little bit longer to process and actually verify everything, but that was the cutoff date we were told. It doesn't mean that you can't apply beyond that date. It just means that if you're wanting to get in for the full year, uh, be a full award amount for the year, you need to be in, have everything in by that date. Otherwise the award amount might be prorated based on which quarter you're approved in.
Perfect. Because the funds drop September 1.
Yes.
All right. So we have been at this almost an hour and bless Brenda's heart. I know that's a lot of stamina in the digital world for someone who does not want to be in the digital world. So we will take it easy on you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. And I will say, because we did have this question, I'll make this the last one. Um, the question was, have you considered extending them beyond August, the live videos? And the answer to that is, we did extend it beyond August. I extended it through December. Um, so if, and we'll revisit in December to see if Mondays are still good or if there's a better day, et cetera. But we plan to do these ongoing as a form of support for our home education community. We, we value that you are as interested in your legal rights as we are in lobbying for them. And we want to make sure that you have all of the answers to your rights uh, and opportunities as much as possible. So we, we plan on doing these. They may not always be as long because we may not always have a PEP to dig up a million questions.
Yes, hopefully.
With pages and pages of forums being added daily.
Yes, hopefully a lot of these questions will eventually be settled and we won't have so many, uh, questions about PEP to answer, but you know.
But with that being said, we will be live again Monday at noon and the following Monday, Lord willing. And we have 53 beautiful souls who have been with us for the last hour. We're going to let you guys get back to your day. If you do share this with someone else, make sure to let them know they can just listen to it as well. I'm going to get it up on, um, uh, YouTube as well. So if they like to listen to it in double speed, they can go over there and listen. I listen to the videos in double speed because I don't have time to sit around and watch them all the time. So. That being said, any, anything else Brenda that you want to add before we sign off?
Anything else will be covered on Monday.
Sounds good. All right, Brenda, have a great, great rest of your week. I'm sure
Thank you, Jason and Crystal.
Before the end of the day.
I could not do this without you.
You're welcome. We love you. And we love all, all the other home educators out there who are as passionate about their
Yes, thank you for all being here and thank you especially for sharing these videos because it's been a huge help to see the, the information for HEF shared in the Facebook groups, helping direct people to uh, where we have the most up-to-date answers because, um, as we kind of mentioned at the beginning of the video, Brenda really is the most direct source for this type of information right now. So.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to put us up with our stream ending, uh, and some sound effects and you guys have a wonderful rest of your day.